Alma was here.
Yes, he was yesterday. Man, he is really putting on the miles with his. I told him, he needs to share his info with me for when I retire.
Yeah, he had shared it, but it just, it doesn't work even this, but when you retire.
Right, yes, yes.
And have kids still.
Yeah, true, yeah. Yeah, yeah. He has been traveling all over.
I know. It's just kind of the times right now. It's perfect to be there with all of the interest rates and we got free finance.
Well, yep, Gary got some retirement stuff from his farmland retirement in the mail yesterday. And in order for him to draw that down, we have to have our signatures notarized. So I'm glad I've got notaries in the office besides myself. True, well Debbie is too, so.
And I did it for that reason.
Yeah. Well, maybe it'll work out down the road. It's kind of frightening, the fact that he's, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna have enough money? I mean, once I retire, I know we'll have enough money, but between his retirement and mine, are we gonna have enough money? And I'm just stressing, yeah, I'm just stressing. You don't have to put that on. Nope, just, no, it's fine.
Are you sure?
Yes, I've got mine on, so. Like I said, I was a little irritated last week by other things. No, you're fine. No, 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 no.
All right, it is 9:00 a.m. I am going to call this meeting to order. And Cindy, I believe it is your turn this week.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is Tuesday, December 15th. It's our weekly Cuddington County Commission meeting. Call for public comment under item number two. We will still take phone calls at 882-624-8888. We will address those during the open part of the meeting for anyone who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Is there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
All right, item number four, action to approve the December 15th, 2020 agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the December 8, 2020 meeting. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we'll move on to monthly reports and we'll start with extension. And we have Jody here today.
Morning, Jody.
Morning, Jody.
Morning, I just have a few things.
Turn on your mic, Jody.
Do I need to pull this down or you can hear me good?
Just pull it up just a little, turn, turn it up just a little bit.
All right, so we did do our 4H calendars again this year for the state fair. There weren't as many as submitted this year because not as many exhibits at the fair also. But we have two from Cuddington County. This one here is my daughter's, well actually my son's picture of my daughter. And then another one of dog, they had to deal with 4H, 4H activities in there. So I have one for each of you. If you want to pass them out later, you can. There you go. And then we also, our special foods committee took the last, we've always had requests for cookbooks. And so we took the last five years and we've been collecting them because Sonia Mack and I from Brookings County are on the special foods committee. We had that up and so we've been keeping them. And so we took the last five years of special foods cookbooks or recipes. And they're finally in a cookbook that just got shipped out today, this week. So these are fresh and hot off the press from SDSU. So they just have a few extra, that they ordered extra at SDSU's office, so.
And they're for sale?
They were for sale, yeah. We, they were pre-ordered and so, but they did order extra. So if you want one, I can try and get one for you, so.
So contact you.
Yeah, contact me if you want one.
What kind of price do you have?
They were $25.
Twenty-five?
Yep, yep. But we didn't end up making much because the shipping on them was so high. So I did have all of our Cuddington County ones shipped or boxed and sent to Sonia. And she got them to me so we didn't have to ship our own county's stuff to us and everywhere else in our county. So we've been doing some take home projects this fall. And for December, I did a wood candle project that I offered to the youth and didn't know what we'd expect. And so we just charged them a low fee and our trust fund was going to cover the rest of it, of the supplies. And on November 25th, we had 92 kits ordered. And so thanks to my husband helping cut them. And then, and then my secretaries put them all together into kits. And then my daughter recorded me showing the kids how to do it. And so that was sent out too. So the kids actually learned something about staining or, you know, sanding wood and painting wood and things like that. So then January's is going to be baking with yeast and trying to get more kids learning how to do some of those skills. So Red Star furnished us with some yeast last year for our achievement days for people that baked with yeast. We didn't have as many, so I have some yeast left, so we're going to use that to help teach the kids. And they have their own videos right on there on how to teach the kids how to bake. So I don't have to do those this time too. I'm busy kind of working on some grants for our shooting sports and possibly for our take home kits here. So the kids don't have to pay a lot. We're going to work on a grant through the South Dakota 4H Leaguers Association. Some clubs are meeting right now, they're, they do wear masks and distance. They can do that easily in our kitchen. So some are using our kitchen area to do that also. And we're busy farm show planning and trying to come up with a plan for our lunch counter in our Northeast cash show because we have to get it submitted to SDSU for approval before we can proceed on that. So kind of working on plans and everything takes a lot of thinking, so. But any questions?
No, I have a comment. I thought to, and drove through city park and looked at the lights and the displays out there. 4H has a nice one out there and I'm sure your husband had something to do with that.
Yeah, and I was, when I was in Ohio at the national conference, that same 4H was up on their stage for the award ceremony. So I took a picture of it and then I found out who had made it and they sent me the, you know, dimensions and stuff from Ohio and so.
I thought you brought it back on the plane.
No, I didn't, but we've used it a lot for recognition events and for achievement days and so it's gotten a lot of use out of it.
The other commissioners to get out and look at that. And all the other displays are very, very nice. And of course, we didn't have ours out there this year because we did approve it, but thank you for doing that.
Yep.
It just reminds us that we have a place in our community for 4H. A lot of people like to see that.
I actually have been through there already. It is very nice, so.
Thanks.
Thanks, Julie.
Next year, I'll try and find green lights for it, so.
You probably won't get any on discount after Christmas because they're pretty much wiped out.
Yeah.
I was trying to find some and you can't find lights anywhere hardly.
No, it's pretty wiped out, so.
All right, anything else?
You'll be able, you'll be able to have the shooting of sports.
We're working on that too. We're trying to get a plan together for that too and spacing and.
That's the biggie.
You know, and things, and we don't have a lot of space, so in the city auditorium or, you know, so.
Yeah.
We'll have to figure out something, so. They said, you know, families can be together, but you may have a family member that has a beginner and a senior and they both shoot at different distances. When you're doing BB gun and air pistol and a rifle, they're always the same distance, no matter what. They just have to reach a certain different, you know, different amount of points. But for archery, there's different, different distances, so.
They should go out to the gun range. I've been driving by there, I bet there's a lot of room out there.
As long as you can get it heated.
A little chilly out there.
That would help.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jody. All right, then we will move on to Steve, our facilities manager, for his report.
Yeah, that's fine here, thank you.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning. Well, we'll start out with the courthouse. Currently at the time, right now, the project for the installation of the FOB system is going on. They should have it completed this weekend and so everything looks to be going good. I don't know if you've noticed, but I put new posts out in the parking lot for where the sheriff's and the 15-minute post used to be. They were kind of all twisted and bent. Got some tail spar from the highway shop and we mounted it on the sidewalk and stuff. So now we should leave less time of bumping, I guess, in with the snow plowing and damaging them. Currently, I suppose some of you have known that we've had some falls here and we installed a camera. We stalled the handrail. We still get falls almost daily. One thing noticed on the camera, they're stepping over the yellow bottom stripe and they're missing it. I contacted Safety Benefits to see if they can help me with, with some advice for down there. And I haven't got a call back yet, so.
I think it was their recommendation that we do that.
Right, but it's, it just continues. And I don't know if it's the stripe is thinking that it's the bottom floor. I have no idea. We might have to change, pull the rug away, something.
Didn't we discuss tinting that glass?
We, we talked about tinting the grass, glass, but it seems like nobody is looking out that way. They're just kind of walking right over it. They're like, they think that stripe is the very bottom floor. Right.
Did the falls begin when we installed that? Is that when we started to have the problem?
We had the falls before, but they've been much more since we installed.
I think there might be a little bit too with masks, might be kind of doing a vision deal too for that. Because when you, if you stand up and you look down and look down just with your eyes and glance, you all of a sudden lose X amount of distance in front of you. Those are possibilities, it's.
You think we could hang a sign on that glass that says, "Watch your step"?
Yeah.
No, I mean.
Somebody suggested, somebody suggested on the top floor to have, this is how many steps it is so people can count.
Count, probably would lose track.
I don't know.
No, and I didn't say that to be funny, I just.
I, I realize that, I know, I know that, I know that, yeah. Yeah, something, we have to do something, it's just.
A map or set the bottom so it mounts.
It's crazy.
And you know, we don't have much signage about an elevator. I wonder if a lot of those individuals even realize, you know, some of them don't even know we have.
Dave, Dave will more or less direct some people if they're, you know, seeing older ones. And so they'll direct, there's an, there's an elevator there, there's an elevator. So I don't know if they're insecure about using elevators, but I don't know. We're going to try to see what we can do. Yes, I would like to probably tint those windows, especially for the fact with, when you come in from the north door, there's quite a few people that will turn and go towards my office. And they, that, that white lettering kind of just blends in with the, with the background, you know, with the steps. I think by putting a tent in there, will probably shine and show that sign saying, "Security, point narrow this way." I think I'm going to still try doing that, putting some tinted glass, tint in the windows and some of them glass windows, so.
So we put a handrail in there.
There's gotta be, it's something very simple that we're overlooking.
Something.
It's the bottom step.
It's the bottom step. Take the step away, right?
Didn't people fall before with that security barrier?
Not, not as off, they fell before, but not as many, not as many since that.
One thing also, some of them are walking down the one side of the handrail, the far, the, when you're going down the right-hand side. And the last step or so, they'll cross over to the last step or two. And it seems like sometimes they'll stumble when they're doing that, so.
We have cameras on that staircase.
We have cameras on the staircase, yes. All right, move on to the extension building. Currently, right now, they are setting up for the barn for the farm show. As most of you know, that the booths will not be in the farm show this year, but the, they're still going to do the show and sale of cattle. So they are at the present time setting up the, the, or the gates and stuff for the, for the show. Park, right now in the process of, they downloaded the, the old version of the grid. And now they're getting the process to send in that to have it all put on the new system.
Reservation.
Reservation system, yes. Weed, basically, there is, the state conference in February has been canceled. There probably have to, the state commission will have to have a, the state weed commission will have to have a special meeting because usually at the conference, anybody that has special grants and needs to present that in order to qualify for their full grant money, they are in the process. They'll have to discuss how they're going to do those grants for those special grants. And criteria of notch, because there's criteria, of course, attendance and so they add. So they'll have to discuss how they're going to handle that for grant dollars. Otherwise, that probably wraps it up for me. If anybody else has any other questions?
Just real quick, I received a phone call from a representative with the Watertown Area Home Builders Association and they were asking about the extension building. And I stressed to them that the decision for the farm show was a farm show decision, that's not a.
Yeah, that's the egg committee decision.
Right now, unless things change, the building's still open and.
Right, that would probably be up to their association to be able to determine if they want to still hold their, their event.
Yeah, there wasn't anything on our end that was the.
No, no, it was the decision of the egg committee.
Yep, that's good. And their show isn't until March anyways.
Okay, yep, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. Okay, next we'll move on to Rick with the highway report. And then we'll just keep you up here since we have several things.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
Well, it's been kind of a uneventful last month, which is kind of nice. Our guys had Flagler certification that was put on by LTAP. They came to our shop and they did that on the 29th of October. That was something that Safety Benefits had asked about. So I think we have one guy that was out, he was on sick leave. But the assistant superintendent will be able to certify him. So we'll have everybody that gone through the class. We are currently gravelling, we're about done. Because we've, we've had to spread a lot of gravel and the weather cooperated. They're gravelling today, so either today or tomorrow, we should be finishing up with that and then start doing other things. We have, we were able to get some culvert work done. We still have more to do, but most of that will probably be pushed into next year now. We've got a little rip wrap stuff that, rip wraps higher than the road. And we're going to start working on that tomorrow, trying to get that evened out so it doesn't stick up so high to catch snow. I'm happy to announce that the bridge on County Road 44 is open. We opened that up last Friday. The contractor came in and got everything done. They were able to get it seated. We won't be able to put the fence up because they put their silt fence right where the fence goes back in. So we'll have to wait till the grass gets grown up next year. And I've already talked to the landowner because we put in a temporary electric fence on their property. And we're going to take the wire out and leave the posts. And that way, next spring, we can go back and put the electric wire back up and just continue on with that. Our mechanic has been busy with repairs. And like I said, we'll start doing other things. We've got trees and things that we need to get, so our, like in the towns. We go through town every year because there's always branches that hit our antennas and mirrors. And so we don't have any damage there. We'll start with that, then we go out in the country and what's in the right way, we start taking those down. So that's pretty much it for my monthly report this month, so.
Okay, so the next thing then, we'll just keep you here. It's opening of the bids for Rip Wrap and Action to Award a Successful bidder. Cindy has those. Two of them. I have one.
No, I don't.
I got a little piece of paper in there.
Well, you're opening up bids, remind the people where, this is Stick Lake.
This is on County Road 81, which would be six miles north of Tinkertown or Highway 212. And then it's in between our County Road 23 and County Road 27. 27 is north of Henry and 23 is north of Tinkertown. And it's six miles north and then back to the west, about two miles. There are spots that we, there was like six spots that we worked on to build them up. This is probably the lowest one because it's in the middle of, so people can get out to the west, people can get out to the east. But if we don't rip wrap it, it, if the water comes up, it'll wash away everything that we worked on this fall, so.
When the water comes up.
Don't even talk like that.
And I was receiving phone calls throughout the summer, fall, when school was back in session because there's some schools that use that for a bus route, so.
Yeah, there, a lot of people did not realize how much they used that road until it was closed. Okay. The first bidder is Crease Construction out of Wabbe.
Spell that, will you?
Okay, let's see. And there is a bid bond. And the total is $449,050. Okay, the second bidder is Clausen and Son Construction. And there is a bid bond. And their total is $515,100.
So is this something you want to look over and compare? Are you able to make a recommendation right away or what's?
Or just the two bids?
Just, that's it, that's all you had, wasn't it Cindy?
Yes, yes.
Yep. No, this, this can be awarded, you know, because most everything, you know, it was, alls it was, was hauling, placing and putting fabric down for the rip wrap.
Is there a completion date on this?
The end of February.
They have it on there. February 28th.
Yes, because this needs to get done before the load limits go on. And hopefully the, we don't have any water, so it needs to get done this winter. So that was in the bid.
Specs.
And I will have a contract, I thought I printed it out, but I can run back.
So is your recommendation to go with Crease?
My recommendation is to go with Crease Construction.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. All right, we will move on then to item number eight, action to order and purchase motor graders from bidding agent Sourcewell. It's kind of where our issue came last week, just to make sure that Sourcewell is an acceptable method according to legislative audit. And we did receive that information. Proper documentation has been sent to Cindy. So what is your wishes on this?
Well, that's what I'd like, I'd recommend that we go with. You know, like I said before, I have nothing against John Deere equipment. It's just some of their stuff does not meet our specs. You know, we have two service techs that live right here in Watertown that work for Butler Machinery. Their service is second to none. There again, I have no, nothing against John Deere, but we have guys right here in our community. We also have, I do believe our boat tech has Caterpillar affiliated with it, you know, so.
I make the motion to, to, to approve this to order and purchase the motor graders through Sourcewell.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and second, any discussion?
Well, I contacted all of you. I don't care where we buy them, but I want to look at what the bottom line is for us. And we have, I think Caterpillar's here, RDO is here. And I think we should let them give their presentation, listen to what they have to say. We're talking about a half a million dollars, just about. And I think the public deserves, we're on public this, the process here. And I think we should listen to their presentation.
Rick, did we find out if that $150,000, that buyback from Caterpillar, was that part of? I don't know, maybe, I'd like some explanation on that, I guess.
And I guess I, I placed that question to the Caterpillar man. Is that a trade-in price or is that a buyback?
Let's have him come up here.
First of all, we have our legal counsel here. I guess I would just like to know, since these bid amounts were released last week to the public.
Were they, was it a bid item?
Well, it's. It was, go ahead.
It was a bid from Sourcewell to the public.
So.
So the, the amounts were released to the public. So can we now have another entity come in and?
Give us a price.
Give us a price after that's been released?
Was it, it was a bid item, you bid it?
No, it was not a bid.
It's off the contract list.
It was, it was off Sourcewell, which is a bidding agent for government agencies. And it was a firm price from Butler Equipment.
And so if you want to listen to somebody else that's on the contract list, you sure can do that or buy lower.
So can we, you know.
So even though like all the dollar amounts were released, that still is acceptable then to let somebody else?
We had none from another agency.
We did not call for bids. We are purchasing off, bid off of another agency. Like it'd be the same if we purchased off another county's bid. So we, we were not required to publish a notice to bidders.
But their dollar amount was released at last week's meeting. Commissioner Waterman, I believe, asked for another bid from a different RDO, I believe, right Charlie?
I have more information from another company. There's two companies that, that make blades anymore. Myron had another question and the third company doesn't do it. There's Caterpillar and there's. There's Caterpillar and there's John Deere. And this information was released last week, but there was no action taken. And now it's before the board again.
If I'm not mistaken, the, the entity that we took the bid from, you know, the, what was the name of that company?
Speaking, or Butler Equipment or?
Sourcewell. Sourcewell.
Source.
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell. Sourcewell is public information though, correct?
Yes.
So the, the, the bid that we, or the numbers that we got from Sourcewell for the CAT were public information as well as numbers that we would get from RDO or from John Deere would be public information. So as far as, you know, like Brad was concerned about, it's not fair because Deere or RDO knows those numbers that CAT released. Actually, it's public information, so everybody would know it, correct? Am I right in saying that?
No, because it's a, like, you know, Deere doesn't have a price, or CAT doesn't have a price. It's a guaranteed discount, right? So this is the maximum you can sell it, right? So it's a guaranteed bid discount.
And you take our, you can just take our price list. Hand it to you, you pick the options you want, you get a certain percentage off. That's our price. And that'd be his price too. I can make his price, he can make my price.
Or you can go under the price as well.
And then the, the trade or the buyback, that was public knowledge that year. You know, that was where I was at that point, I was in on that.
And that buyback is good either way.
So the question that I have on the buyback is if we don't go with a, a CAT, does that, do we still get that buyback period?
Correct.
Okay, okay. It's not towards the purchase of another?
Right, it's, it's, as long as we're around by the day, you know, seven years or seven five hundred hours, the days that you've gone, we'll, we'll take that.
Okay, okay.
So those amounts that are public record are there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the dollar amount that you're going to put in your con, or your offer. I guess I'd call it an offer.
But they are still public.
Yep, and it could, like they said, it could be lower.
Yep.
And that could be the maximum, so.
So that's just a, but yeah, the, the, the offer that they made could very well be different than what you're going to see the general public.
Well, it's not bidding, so you're not, you can still, you can go ahead and look at other options. It's not a bidding situation.
No, it's not.
And I don't know if the other ones you're looking at are on Sourcewell too, but.
They are.
They are.
Okay.
So actually, it's all right if we do hear from RDO. If they want to present to us what kind of numbers that they have.
Right.
And I, I think my concern is like Commissioner Waterman said, you know, we're talking about a half a million bucks here. It's a lot of money. We need to make certain in defense of our citizens of Cottonton County that we, you know, make a good decision here.
Well, and I don't think anybody's up here
No.
to, to try and sway anything. I think we're, we're out to do what's best for the citizens of Cottonton County, no question about it. We just want to make sure that we're following the right process, so.
Exactly, I just wanted to make sure.
And that's same way here, you know, going off our specs, you know, that's what I'm going off of. And that's Butler met our specs, John Deere did not meet our specs, so.
Okay, yeah, and that's, that's another question that I have. I want, I want these two numbers to be apples to apples.
Yes.
That's what I want. Now, you said they don't meet their specs. What specs don't they meet, you know?
The first, the first one was the engine. We called for a nine point three. John Deere's is just a nine point oh. You know, I know it's only twenty cubic inches in an engine, but that still doesn't meet the spec.
But what about the
You know, and we Yeah, and you can bump the horsepower up in a six, in a, in a little car to have the same amount as a V eight. So we all know that, so. But that, that is close to the same, you know, they're just, that's one of the, that's the first thing on the line, you know?
How many cubic inches are, is this engine, right?
It's five hundred and like I said, there's only, there's about twenty, nineteen and a half cubic inches difference, but it's still, because RDO's is five hundred and forty eight. Caterpillar's is five hundred sixty seven point five, so.
So can I, can I, I just have to ask this question because I'm not a mechanical guy, so I have to ask. I'm going to plead ignorance on this issue, but how are those specs determined? Is that, how have they been determined over the years and why is that so important to the spec?
Because this is, this is something that's been going on for years. You know, we've had motor graders that the engine wasn't big enough, you know? And we've had motor graders that they replaced just about everything. And this is a process that's went on over the years and this is how this spec was come up with. You know, it wasn't just something grabbed out of the air, you know, to put on a piece of paper. It's been trial and error, you know? I've ran these motor graders. I know what they are, you know? They, John Deere brought up motor grader three years ago for us to ride or to to, to run and none of the guys liked it, you know? And it, it didn't fit, you know? The guys liked motor graders that we have, you know?
I just want to make sure that our specs were not just honing on a spec just be, just to meet the spec that Caterpillar has out there.
No, and it's not, you know?
As long as we're not doing that.
Yep, because like I said, we had, they were Caterpillar motor graders that had a too small engine. And we ran them for a while and they came and replaced it because it wouldn't. And that's all that came about, you know? It wasn't, this, this was quite a while ago, so.
I would, I, what I would like to ask the RDO rep that's here, being that specific, just that specific thing on the specs on the engine, how, what does RDO have to counter that? You understand what I'm saying? Okay?
Want to come up here, Chad?
Come up.
You know, is there, you know, I know we go by cubic inch, but you know, it's just like buying a tractor, you know? There's horsepower, there's PTO horsepower and there's ground horsepower. There's all these things that, that you can finagle to make them look bigger or smaller or whatever. But what is your, to what Rick is saying?
Correct.
What is your comment?
Correct. Nine liter, nine point three, you know, six, seven liter to seven point two, you know, there. The capacity of that engine, for example, the Deere engine is at two hundred and seventy five horsepower, thousand sixty foot pounds of torque. That engine is used from this grader all the way up to in a excavator, wheel loaders, combine pushing four hundred and twenty five horsepower. So that engine capacity is designed to handle wide ranges of horsepower used in multiple different applications with John Deere. Like Rick said, those engines can be tuned accordingly. That nine liter is designed to withstand more than any of the hours that the county would ever put on that grader. And then also the output of torque rise. Each gear has different horsepower ranges. So you can play with how much horsepower you want to put to the ground throughout and when you finally hit the max at that point. So with that, Deere tweaks that engine all the time in the grader during your normal day operations, I guess, at that point. You know, in good comparison, we have several graders surrounding this county that are newer with Grant County, Dull County, Clark County, Marshall County, Brown County, Brookings County, Moody County. Anyway, they have multiple John Deere graders rolling in the hills and doing your kind of environment. And they also have some CAT machines and we've, there's no complaints either way on, you know, performance or productivity. Weights, horsepower, fuel consumption, everybody's playing in this seven seventy two to one fifty size class now. John Deere and CAT are the grader zone at that point and so that's where I go with the performance, the satisfaction. We have mechanics, I know you have some right in town for Butler. We have two mechanics within forty miles of here, resident test, one's over by Millbank, one's south by, by Gary. So we also can provide service right in town, oh, in Cottonton County. We work with over a hundred different farmers, farmers, dairy men, feedlots, the cities, contractors. We, we, we are around and very available if something goes wrong. We're twenty four seven operation because of, of, you know, for example, dairies and feedlots, they, the cows don't, you know, they don't take Saturdays and Sundays off and so we got to keep things going at that point, so.
And you kind of asked, opened it up for another question that I have, okay. I, I know that this has been talked about before, but let's say you have a service call. How do you and CAT compare? Do we get charged for our service calls? Does CAT charge for service calls? That's all, there's, there's no charge from either company. How about like replacement, engine replacement, transmission, gear train or rig train, everything? It's all covered with warranty, right?
That's why we carry the warranty that we cover.
Yep. And buyback? Does, are you have a buyback program?
Yes, we do.
And CAT does not have anymore. And what kind of buyback program is that? Explain that, how does that work?
Seven years or seventy five hundred hours. When a machine gets returned, we would same as this type of buyback, we would give you X amount of dollars for your machine. And you could trade it back to us or here you have them, we're going to go buy the competitors at that point, you know? And at that point, I guess, I don't want to say, buybacks can be with snow equipment without, I think the tires need to be around, just saleable tires, meaning around forty percent. The glass can't be all busted up or something like that.
Can you share with us approximately what that? See, they're, they're really, in the open here, their buyback is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Which is
Current today.
That's, that's current today, right, CAT?
Yep.
I mean, and that's a very good buyback program. Do you have any idea, can you, would you share with us any kind of a number with CAT would have?
We have numbers current today that are similar to that. Going forward, oh, buybacks have calmed down, the greater market got very saturated. It's been a more of a challenge for both of us vendors, given as high buybacks because of where markets have trended for resale and things like that. So that has brought them down a little, but we still offer on at that point, so.
So just to pick up on Fisher Johnson's question, so if you were, so if we were to buy one of your graders, we'd get a buyback
Correct.
For seven years from now.
For next.
Next question I have is availability. This is for CAT and for RDO. Now Rick said that we're getting to the end of our contract with CAT. I don't know, when does that contract end? You know, these are some, we're, we're missing numbers. We're missing some information here that I, I think is pertinent, that, that, you know? Where's, where's that original contract at that we had with CAT seven years ago? I remember when we did it, but I certainly don't remember all those numbers. Is it fifteenth of January, February first, or what is it?
First week of February, I don't have the exact
First day of February.
First week of February.
First week of February.
And I, I have all of them, I did.
So then what, what's availability? Have you got machines if we?
These machines would have to be ordered out. And currently we're sitting about ten weeks out-ish, you know, COVID always. As Chad can test, kind of screws things up that way, but I was working with my boss last night and we were trying to figure out a way on that buyback. Cause that buyback, you know, the contract is pretty strict, you know, date. So one of the ideas we had was buy those machines back if those, if the new machines weren't in yet. Buy those machines back and then rent them back to you at, at a low hourly rate until your machines come in, which it shouldn't, you know, depending on how fast everything goes here, it should be a few weeks, you know, to a month.
If there's about a ten week
Lead time, yeah, to build them. We'd have to order them and, and build them.
So that's two and a half months.
Right.
So that takes us.
To the end, about the end of February, I mean, good timing. So about three weeks, I guess.
How about RDO? Have you got a whole fleet of them sitting somewhere ready to go?
Yeah, we don't have a fleet. We do, we have a lot of machines on the ground, but not exactly to your specifications that you guys talked about. Basically, worst case, worst case scenario, best case scenario is the end of February. Worst case scenario, or excuse me, best case scenario is first part of March. Worst case scenario is about the twenty third on lead time, you know? Not exactly sure if all them graders delivered that first week or if there was some delays in there, if they're all in that week, you know? But at the end of the day, definitely was thinking about that as the timeline was getting close. You know, as a company, we would work to basically supply you a grader of some sort to get through that month to month and a half of downtime.
Did you bring a proposal
Yep.
for us to look at? Okay.
So to get us through until, if, if we would go with RDO, we would have, you would supply the highway department machines that would get us through till then on a rental basis. I mean, we would rent them from you until the machines that we would purchase would be available.
They just do something.
And likewise, same, kind of the same thing that we, you would do.
Hang on.
We would, we'd keep the same machines that we have, we just start paying rent on them.
Right, and we have all the
Paying lease on them, yep.
Can I make a point? You cannot buy directly from RDO. You have to buy from a bidding agent.
Yeah.
So Sourcewell has to have this, or another county, another government entity. You can buy off of their bid, you cannot buy directly.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
This is so as well.
Yes, okay, it is, all right, okay.
For sure.
And that's established, okay. All right. So I guess.
Well, I'd like to look at some numbers, I'd like to compare.
I have, I have a question for you, Mr. Counselor. Somewhere in my past lifetime, I've read something about if there's not a significant difference in the machines, say getting back to that twenty or twenty five cubic inches. Is that a, is that a, does that become a moot point then? You're not bidding, so it does, that's what really makes it.
Right, we are not.
No, it's not bidding for us, we're, you're buying on the list.
Yes.
Okay, so the twenty cubic inch goes on the rec, would be more of a, we recommend this than a
So, so really specs aren't
Best business judgment, basically.
Okay. So specs don't mean anything if you're not bidding, right?
That's right.
Right.
I mean, you can pick whatever.
County is booking for a specific type of engine. That's what we, we would wish to buy.
But because it's not a bid, we're not obligated to do that.
And if I use the word bid, I apologize.
I don't know if it's called offer, I don't know what it would be called.
Changed our mind about that. So your question is if we changed our mind about that specific, particular specification?
Yeah. Is it worth, is it right, is the difference, is twenty, twenty cubic inch worth the difference? When we're repairing, when we're, we sold a horsepower and they're both quality machines.
I'd be curious to see, like, if we should do some.
I don't want to see you.
At some point, I want to give our Butler dealer an opportunity to, if there's anything you want to add or so. Look at these and then you'll, you can have an opportunity. Thank you.
So, just to, Chair, just to go with the, do you have a question? So, and just to, Chair, just to go with the, do you have any questions? So, this doesn't show the, Chad, this doesn't show the uh, the buyback amount?
It's in the top, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand. One hundred hours, right in the top.
Oh, yeah, I.
So Chad, is this uh, for one machine, obviously? And we're looking at three machines?
For one and then take it times three if it was uh, for three machines at that point.
Okay. And that does include the buyback price?
The, the bottom number is the purchase price. Uh, if you wanna say the buyback would have to be calculated on, you know, for total cost.
How much is the buyback on this?
One fifteen, one hundred.
One fifteen, one hundred?
Yep, it's about, right in the comments at the top, bottom line, seven years, seventy-five hundred.
So I have a question. On one of the um, graders that Rick had, it had that extra lift group in it?
Yeah, that's, that's my next question too.
So some roadblocks that we've, that I've worked with, with the county for years, for fourteen years now, is wings and things like that. And uh, so with that, my price has the wing, the hitch, the warranty, an extra front rim and a rear rim is part of my whole, so you'd get brand new wing, brand new hitch, extra rim and tire, or rims, excuse me, you guys supply the tire. For, for the graders. Um, also, just, just for comfort for the county, we want to supply a two-year service plan, or excuse me, two thousand hour service plan. Basically, we will come every five hundred hours, four times to each grader, show you, show your mechanic, show the operators how to operate and how to handle, or if they have any questions, the machines. So we will change the oil, do any sort of uh, PM that needs to be done from zero to two thousand hours on those graders. Um, just for, again, to train your guys that haven't been around the deer last time. I think you had a deer was in two thousand or right around there, so.
And yet, uh, when you said that service thing, those four times around, would that put the fluids and filters to?
Fluids, Philip, everything. We just, we actually would monitor the graders for you through JD Link, which is five-year standard on these machines, that we would uh, call you and say, hey, uh, it's about time to uh, do a service on this. Could we uh?
They, they have the same system as my car, that it, uh, I get a, a phone call that says I, my uh, left tire, rear tire is down two pounds. I mean, that's the same system that Cat and Deer both have. I mean, everything is all computerized now, so, you know, you can, you can monitor the maintenance, so they have these machines from wherever. And uh, your cell phone. And uh, and so that, that's one thing that uh, has really improved in, in maintenance.
So the, the uh, the lift group, at the bottom of page one, that's the same thing that, that's kind of the equivalent lip, this lift group over on one of the three graders.
Be a Ballerson style lift group or falls parallift.
What, what do we, what is that?
Oh, it's the hitch that hooks up with V plow or a one-way or, or, you know, your front attachments at that point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, no, that's right.
Uh, is that a new one on each blade then?
Correct.
And this is, and when you mentioned wings, does that include a new wing too?
That's new falls fourteen foot uh, idyllic, full idyllic one. With the rear elevating bolts.
I guess I'd like to hear from Cat.
Yep.
Now.
That's kinda tough listening. Um, no. My plan when I came in here wasn't to come in and bash the deer machine. I know Chad pretty well, you know, he's apparently an easy guy.
Chad, please.
Yeah.
They're, they're both quality pieces of equipment.
Quality pieces.
You know, I, I, you both drink coffee together, you both talk the same language, so.
Uh, you know, my, my big thing on, on some of these, on, on these graders, if you look at our history with Cottington County and the way that we've been able to take care of you with our service techs in town, uh, loaner machines when needed. I mean, we've, we've been there for you guys for, for years. Operators know and are comfortable with, with our cab. You know, that's, that's gonna be, you know, our biggest differentiator is, is, is our cap or visibility. You know, the, how easy it is for the guys, you know, everything's on the controls now. And with these new ones, just like with the, the graders we got in two thousand seventeen, have the advanced joysticks on them. So you, you don't, for safety, you never have to take your hands off the joysticks. You can even, on the new ones, you can even run the, the wing off of the joystick. So they never have to take their hand off to shift or to do anything. They steer with them, so it clears up the front visibility. You know, there's a lot of other things besides hard cost, which our numbers here are very close. I mean, uh, but maintenance items, you know, cost of ownership, you know, if you look at how easy it is to, to, you know, ship, do a top, top adjustable mold boards and uh, all of our, our cylinder heads have, cylinder ends have bronze fittings on them, wear plates, so you don't have to replace the balls on the end. You know, there's just, there's a lot of differentiating stuff that we do that makes it easier for you guys to maintain and, and lower cost of ownership. Because, you know, I go into how big our starter is, how big our alternators are and stuff like that versus theirs, but that doesn't really matter to you because you don't pay for that. It's all under warranty. But to the guy after you, resale value, that stuff adds up. So that also helps you in the end as well. But, you know, two service techs in town, we're looking for one more right now. Um, you know, our goal is hopefully someday to have a store here. My boss wants me to move back, but let's see if that ever works out. But, you know, I just either say, you know, go with what the guys vocally said they like, you know, the operators like these Cat machines. Really good luck with them, really good luck with service, so. And these also include, you know, new wings. My price includes new wings as well, so.
Now, what, what was, what was your price again? Uh, three twenty-nine, seven, seventy-four?
I think we're talking.
Three hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars difference between the two?
Yes.
Why don't you guys spread that out a little bit, make it easier for us?
We uh.
So I'm curious about Caterpillar's um, service, you know, he's,
Right.
You know, what is, what's included in that?
So, you know, I don't have a service plan included on it, but we have a, on a few graders, it's a thousand hour service. You mean, your first PM is a thousand hours. So where Chad has his, his included, cause he's got four in two thousand hours, there's only two services that are required from Cat in that, that first two thousand hours. So if you look at that down the road too, so, so you put six thousand hours on a machine, that's eight times that has to be serviced in four hours, you know? And that's not including like fuel filters and stuff like that, because that depends on where you, you know, fuel is. So it's another owning, operating expense, you know, in time, so. So it seems to me there's, there's two things to think about. Um, one is that John Deere has, still has a buyback for the, for next time. And then compare that to what the likely resale would be on a Cat. Uh, I don't know how to do that. And then the other thing was the, you know, the specification issue on the engine size. And so, understand, understand, you know, what's preferred by our highway department, so. The, so the question out in my mind is the, is the, you know, what's kind of re, I have no idea what kind of resale value you'd be looking at and, or trade-in value you'd be looking at and? Resale of the Caterpillar is generally higher than both John Deere's, you know? And I'm sure John Deere will say, John Deere is more than.
Last, last ten years, John Deere has swung that. You know, that's why we're not offering buybacks anymore.
Yeah.
So it's, it's uh, three hundred and some dollars is, is fine and dandy. Uh, we, we know they're both quality machines. We are actually looking down the road of seven years. And it's not three hundred dollars, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars.
Right.
You know, and I, that's the difference right there, because in seven years, we know we're gonna get a hundred and fifteen thousand back. And if we buy Caterpillar, and I'm a, I'm a numbers type person, uh, anybody, and I analyze the living daylights out of it. Highway kills me sometimes because of that. But uh, it's, we, we got two machines that are very comparable. One, we're getting an all-new machine. That was my next question for you. Are we getting three brand new machines with three brand new wings and three, and three hookups? Or are we gonna keep the wings that we've got now with one new hitch on the front?
No, so you'll get all new wings and all three. It's all brand new machines that have to be ordered and built. Uh, if you get three brand new wings and then one new lift group, uh, Rick had two that he was gonna. We, we usually save those off our machines because it saves us money.
Yeah, I, I realize that. I know.
And uh, like I said, the one that came off of nineteen eighty-nine Champion, it still works good. The only reason we didn't want it is because it had some damage on it.
Yep.
And we'll have, but I'll have that back, so.
No, I, that's, that's fine and dandy. I mean, we're just talking, I'm just, I have no dog in the fight. My, the, the only dog that I have in the fight is with the taxes that I pay. That's, that's my dog in the fight and with the other people that talk to me about that. So that's, that's my major, that's why I asked to look into this. That's why I informed everybody and uh, if, that's my analysis. Yeah, they're very, very close in, in deal work. We're A's and Bs and Cs and Bs. Uh, to me, that hundred and fifteen thousand dollar buyback at the end of seven years is an awful big thing. My next question is, my next question is, what's the hourly rate on Caterpillar for renting a blade that you can't get back if COVID doesn't let you supply?
Right. Um, this was just a quick conversation last night with my boss and we were just talking about doing the, the excess hour rate on our rental program, which is like forty-five dollars an hour.
Right, and the same thing I'm gonna ask for you. I know you're not supplying blades now, but if you have to rent, if we have to rent a blade or you, we, you supply one and we have to rent one due to the COVID thing, how much of an hour is it going to cost us?
Right, we're fifty bucks an hour, um, at that point, so.
So that's all comparable to?
Plus, keep in mind, the machines that we would rent from them would not be equal, equivalent to the machines that we have right now, that we would rent from Butler.
Maybe seven seventy-two's, I mean, just not the new ones that you guys would be getting at that point, you know? Uh, and then uh, just a couple of features, uh, standard on our equipment. Uh, our controls are standard joystick style. Everything's on the controls. Um, your shifting wing controls, everything's on your joysticks now, so you don't have to, like, we were talking, jump from one to the other. Um, there's some other comfort factors. Our machine also has a steering wheel, so sometimes the customers will set up their cross, they'll run on one hand, they can run one hand on the wheel. There's some little tweaks that a guy can play with when flying snow and doing some of that stuff. Automatic reversing fan on the cooling package is another feature. Comes standard on the John Deere. Every twenty minutes, it automatically blows out your radiators. So basically, as you're blading along, keep that all cleaned out and working well. So maintenance items, you know, um, circles, our mall board works great. Uh, whereas uh, shims, everything's replaceable in a timely manner. Um, nothing's um, out of the ordinary from the competitors at that point, I guess, at that point. Um, for serviceability, I guess, is where I'm going with it here. You'd stack our daily operating costs side by side from ten thousand hours and you might find a five hundred dollars difference between one way or the other. I'm not sure which way it is, but uh.
And they're all yellow.
There's different shades.
Different shade of yellow, yeah. So we're not arguing red and green here, so.
Could I make a point on the, on the buyback? I wasn't aware that we were looking for a buyback on this, and we don't publicly offer a buyback, but two things, A, a hundred and, at a hundred and fifteen thousand in five years is, is a pretty obtainable number. I mean, pretty easily obtainable number.
Seven years.
Yeah, seven years, I'm sorry. I'd like to have a, if I could get a chance to talk to my uppers and see if, if we could offer that as well, because, you know, you, he saw my number first, I'd like a chance to be able to go back.
Well, I think that's fair.
This number is in public knowledge, you know, that's the thing. That, that number is in public knowledge. Uh, that's completely um, one that we have to generate at that point. So he, he can make whatever he wants now, at that point. I'm not trying to be that guy, just saying that, that is one that he can make it whatever he wants.
So I'm curious about, Rick, seven years for these machines, seventy-five hundred hours, is that average? Is that like average mileage on a car, like if we're to compare a car, is that, so?
Yes.
Um, is it necessary to replace them in seven years? If, if there is no buyback, could we?
Well, that's one of the things.
Seventy-five hundred hours doesn't seem like it's that much time. I don't know, maybe it is.
If you take the uh, warranty off it, you know, that's huge, you know? What, what's an engine cost? What's an engine cost?
About thirty.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, we, we get to use the best part of the machine, cause we get it with no hours on it. And we put roughly six, between six thousand generally to that seventy-five hundred. You know, depends on the winter, depends on the summer. You know, how many hours we put on, we generally put about a thousand hours a year. You know, this year, we may have put more hours on in the summer. Last winter, we didn't put as many hours on, the winter before, we put a ton of hours on, you know, because the guys were out every day, but.
This winter, we might not.
We're not going to.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rick.
You know, it's one of those things, they probably don't have to be replaced, but when you take the warranty off, you spend thirty thousand dollars in case an engine had blow up, you know? There again, the transmission goes out or anything like that. Granted, it probably won't, you know, cause they're both good machines. But then you spent thirty thousand dollars that, you know, we just had that happen on a truck that we had, we've had for a long time.
I, I guess I've got an act, a question for Caterpillar. What is the hours on it? What, what's the life expectancy on this engine, this whatever one was? And what's the life expectancy of the transmission?
You know, I guess that's a hard question to answer. I mean, you see them all over, right? I mean, you see some that run fifteen thousand hours without a rebuild, ten thousand hours. I mean, it all depends on who's got it, who's servicing it.
It's like a factor, seven thousand hours isn't that much anymore.
Right.
I mean, you know, like uh.
But see, part of that is the resale part. Why we get rid of it after seven years, you know, there's still value left on it. You run it for fifteen years, that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars goes way down, you know? We're trying to get something back so it doesn't cost us as much to get rid of them, you know? That's the reason why, you know?
And to stay in line with the warranty.
Yes, that way everything's covered. So we don't have to do, all we do is regular maintenance on them.
Right.
Change oil, tires, windows, you know, cause windows get broke all the time because there's rocks and all kinds of good stuff, so.
And rocks are, and windows are covered by warranty?
No. No.
There was a, there was a statement that was brought up, a hundred percent covered by warranty.
Yeah, but that's, that's on the machine, but.
And so that would be something that I would.
All right.
So I was gonna, I was gonna modify.
Commissioner Gable.
Yeah, I was gonna modify my motion. Since the motion just says to, to buy off Sourcewell, since either one of these would be buying off Sourcewell, I guess we need to say which one. So I'd, I'd modify my motion to, to purchase the, the Caterpillar machines as proposed, as, as uh, shown to us by our, the highway superintendent.
Okay. So.
You, you, are you okay with that modification, seconded or?
Yeah, yeah, I'll second.
That was, okay.
So what was that, what was that motion again, or what?
Well, well, the, the, the original motion just said to buy it by Officer Sourcewell, so I think now we're talking two things off Officer Sourcewell, so I just said the Caterpillar machines.
So.
Specifying Caterpillar.
Now we'll need to vote on that modification of yours.
Say that one more time, Lee.
I just, I just said specifically which machines we're talking about off of Sourcewell. If you look at the motion here, it just says.
He's modifying his motion, so we don't, we don't have, we don't need to act on that.
So.
Yeah, I'll note it in the minutes.
Since we're talking about two different sets of machines, I need to talk about which one in the motion, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so we just need to be specific, so we know since we're.
Which one we're talking about.
Yeah.
We can buy one of each and then just.
I guess, I guess we split the last one in half, so we got two different colors.
That was my next question.
Okay.
You know, that, you know, what if we uh, you know, what if we buy one from RDO or one from Cat? or one from CAT and two, is that gonna, could we do that?
That would, we'd have to have new inventory, everything, training, you know? My recommendation is to buy the Caterpillar machines. You know, I, like I said, I have nothing against John Deere and will be doing this again in the not too near future, so.
Right.
But my recommendation is to go with the.
You know, my my only hangup at this point is the is the buyback. I think Commissioner Waterman brings up a good point. I think if if Caterpillar wants to to go back and speak to his supervisors or whatever and then come back, I I wouldn't encourage you to do that. I think this is a big purchase, a big decision for us in the county.
When we're talking apples to apples here, we're pretty well equal. I have been involved in many of your processes in the past. Most people know I used to be in the trucking business. If somebody would come to my table and present both of these with the figures that we've got here, yes, it would be to my advantage. Is it fair to come? You didn't come with a buyback. Why didn't you come with a buyback?
I didn't know that that's what we're looking for, I guess. I mean, that that.
You know, we did not know that John Deere had a buyback, you know?
Is that, is that pertinent information to the competitor? I don't think so.
All right, so I guess whatever, I don't know if it's exactly important that we know the buyback at this point, uh, just for the simple fact that, you know, you gave it, but that's not pub- public knowledge now. Everybody knows that we're gonna kind of get in the same sort of situation that we were before. Um, at the end of the seven years, we can bid these things out, sealed bid, try to sell them like that too and see who bids them out for the most money.
So I'm sure, I'm over the question.
Yep, okay.
Excuse me, just.
Uh, he made move to the question, so we have no more conversation at this point.
Now, we do need a second to move the question and we need to go on it.
Okay, have a motion and a second, so that means that we are ready to vote?
On the question, on moving the question.
Okay.
You want to roll call that? Sure.
Okay.
Um, this is, this motion is move the question, um, Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
Hanton.
Aye.
So you voted in favor to move the question. That means you are now ready to vote on the motion and the second to purchase from Sourcewell and purchase the Butler um Caterpillars. So the chair can call for.
I'll call, roll call vote on that as well.
Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
Hanton.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two in favor of purchasing Butler from Sourcewell.
Thank you, very happy. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, we'll move on then to item number nine, action to approve COVID payroll supplement for part-time employees. We discussed this last time. We have a formula that we are going to follow to do that. Cindy, you want to give a little information on that?
Um, before we make any motions, I'd just like to make sure we have everything clear. Okay, we have part-time employees without benefits. The number of hours that they have worked from March first through November um range from eleven hours to six hundred and seventy-eight hours. The amount, if I use ten months of the six hundred and fifty, the amount is thirty-seven cents per hour. And instead of using the full number of hours for the year, it's my recommendation we use the ten months because that's what we're looking at time-wise for these part-time people.
Yeah, will will that take us through December then?
Uh, no, we'll have to pay these part-timers out in January after we receive their December hours.
Okay, okay.
So it comes to thirty-seven cents an hour. Here's my question, we have one part-timer who only has eleven hours in. Are you going to cut them a check for four dollars and seven cents or are you going to set a minimum?
No, I think if we're gonna do it fairly, we gotta do it by the hour. Even if it's four dollars and fifteen.
By the time they take tax, probably they end up with.
Uh, that's a good question. Just let me um, so the high would be like two hundred and fifty-one dollars. The low would be four dollars and seven cents. That's, before we make any motions, I just want to bring those numbers out there so that you're aware of what we're looking at and that these payments will not be made until January because we won't have December hours when we do December payroll for the part-timers, so.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So this, and this, so we're talking about part-timers without benefits.
Correct, part-timers who are in a pool of people that we call in on an as-needed basis.
Do we have to make that a motion or is this, you're just looking for a record?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
What was Lee's motion?
To approve the, as as Cindy described, um, these payroll, these payroll supplements for part-time employees without benefits based on, based on the hours they work over the ten months of COVID.
And that was a question that, I'm I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're, go ahead.
That was a question that had been brought up to me was they would receive the payment in January.
Yes, because, yeah, we won't have their hours and time to pay with December. December payroll is the twenty-second of December and those employees could get in a lot more hours between twenty-second and thirty-first, so.
It's to their benefit that we wait.
Yeah.
So we have a motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Um, did everybody see the email I sent out regarding our full-time employee who is on military leave?
Yeah, I seen that.
Oh, I, yeah, I did, I saw that. I I think that uh.
I mean, it doesn't take, it doesn't take a motion, we can, I mean, he is our full-time employee. He is on a one-year military leave. When he comes back to us, he will still be our full-time employee. He was with us from March through August.
The fact that he was here for most of the year, I think.
Yes.
Let's, yeah, just.
It's my opinion he should be included.
Treat him like the others, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, for the time that he's employed.
All right, if that's your consensus, then that's how we'll process payroll.
I think he would be eligible for that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, let's move on to item number ten then, action to approve contract for E nine-one-one service. This is a, Cindy, you go ahead.
Uh, this is a contract that we have entered into previously when we got our nine-one-one money. Um, I believe we paid a portion of it to the city of Watertown. And actually, with right now, that the city has requested one hundred percent of those dollars to be paid to them and that's what this contract is. Um, it's, there's nothing out of the ordinary. It's what we're doing right now every month. I get a notice from the Department of Revenue telling me how many search, how much we had in search charge collections in a certain month and then we pay that out to the city monthly.
Yeah.
And this is a renewal of this contract, um, I don't know, is there a?
January twenty-twenty-one till December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. So it's a yearly, so it's a yearly and it, how many years?
Two years.
Two years.
Two years, this one is for two years. If it's for twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two.
January one of twenty-twenty-one, yeah, okay, so and that's kind of, I don't remember. We decided to go a hundred percent when we renewed the last contract, so that was probably two years ago, so.
Yeah, at least.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any further discussion?
Is there any changes or modifications to the contract or is it?
Not that I can see, no.
Stay the same?
Stay as the same, yep.
I do, I think, I felt like that we should get some pass-through uh because it takes our people time to pass this money through and um. I know that, I I, you know, now, what what we're doing is all right, but I still think that uh, well, it's one of those things. Anywhere else you go, if it was uh, if we're using some kind of a uh financial facility to transfer our money, there would be a charge. And I guess this is just being good neighbors, whatever, but that's just my thought.
It's pass-through and the reason that we went to a hundred percent is it was getting to the point that some of those funds that we were retaining, it became difficult to spend it. There was, it was very specific as to what you could spend those dollars on and we just decided to give it a hundred percent to the city when we just got to that point.
It's all, well, it's all search charge money in this case.
Well, and if you look at the.
For a certain purpose.
If you look at the budget of the nine-one-one center, it's not a moneymaker. The city pays a good chunk of money, yeah.
Not at all, Cindy, is it difficult to pass-through?
No.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Okay, item number eleven, action to approve the welfare director job description. We all received that. Um, Natalie, do you have any thing you'd like to add? Anyone else?
It's not, it's not in the packet, I thought, oh, or is it?
No, I did not get it.
Oh, okay. I, well, we, I did look at it and I thought it was, I thought you guys did a good job. Let me see if I can.
There was just some minor little tweaks to it that.
Yeah. Do you want to send it?
Basically, just some of it was typographical and um.
I mean, what were the significant ones from what we?
There was a section in there about partnerships.
Oh, I thought that was still in there.
I have an email that's due, but I just let you finalize last week.
Yeah.
I'll move to prove it.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any further discussion?
Uh, I I don't know if we should, I, it doesn't include it in the, in the item on the agenda, but uh, we need to start advertising, we need to start interviewing.
We already did that.
You already, you already took action to advertise.
We just had to get this done.
So we'll, we need to set up interview schedules and so on and so forth.
We need to do it.
First, we need to advertise and we already made that motion. We just had to get this done, so now Natalie can go forward with getting the advertisement out there.
Perfect.
And just, just to let people know what I think the significant differences are where is in the qualification part of it is probably the significant thing. So a bachelor's science degree in a relevant field preferred or equivalent combination of education, training and experience, that's probably a significant change to this, this job description.
And uh, just for the record, because I've had calls on it, how do people apply?
Um, I would say job service.
Okay, job service?
Yeah.
We do not take applications in the office.
Okay.
Because it's always went through job service.
The Department of Labor.
Yeah.
Out on West two twelve.
Or you can do it.
Or online, okay.
Online's a good, good, so. They, I think they do, they.
They might now with COVID.
Yeah.
They might have changed that.
Are we, are we gonna be in any, wanna follow the law for advertising online? Is there some places that we have to advertise?
Well, and I would say our our procedure is to advertise in the public opinion as well.
Yeah, we'll use our legal newspapers and job services.
And I I recommended that we go outside of our area too to to seek candidates and I don't know.
Jacobson. She'll point it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then if it gets on the DLR website, that's accessible to everybody, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Um, is Luke on yet or not? Otherwise, we can kind of skip over this, we can go through the rest of it and then come back.
I'm here if you want to take me on.
We can hear you, Luke.
We.
All right, Luke, go ahead.
Let me see if I can find that thing, find the thingy.
Pull up the slides.
Yeah.
All right, and that's the same order I have things, so. Uh, the first plat that we have, and I have four plats to address today. Uh, the first one is a plat owned by the Lynches. It's called the Plat of Prairie Vibe Edition Northeast Quarter, Section thirteen in Rawville Township, northwest of Waverly, uh, two west and two north, or two and a half east and two north of the Waverly exit on the interstate, however you prefer. Um, going to the next slide, Commissioner Gable is just the plat itself. This was recommended for approval via existing farmstead exemption. This plat, this fifteen-acre plat does leave a remaining, I believe, in the neighborhood of sixty acres owned by the Lynches as well, which uh also meets the zoning ordinance. Planning Commission recommended approval of this back at the uh first week of December.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Gable. Um, Waterman got that second. Um, any further discussion, questions for Luke? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries, all right. On to the next.
What is the plat of uh Schwinger Second Edition in the, here, I gotta get that all the way through. Uh, Schwinger Second Edition in the east half of the northeast quarter and the east half of the southeast quarter, Section seven, one nineteen north, range fifty-two of the former reservation, that's in Dexter Township. Uh, straight north of County Road seventeen, where County Road seventeen meets Highway twenty and it is, now I have to estimate, Commissioner Waterman probably knows this a little bit better, but where it turns into gravel, it's two miles farther north. I'd say that's probably a total of about seven miles north of Highway twenty. Uh, all they're doing here is they're creating a sixty-two acre tract to transfer to um the uh, the tenants there of Schwinger Edition that is in the southeast corner there. So ultimately, the people uh in this term are gonna wind up owning a total of sixty-seven acres, whereas today they own five. So that's all that is. Uh, recommended again for approval at the uh meeting earlier this month.
Move to approve, second.
All right, got a motion by Waterman, second by, or.
Motion by.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Okay, you guys are all starting to sound. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right.
All right, the next plat, the next plat is a plat of Brooklyn First Edition in the southeast quarter of Section four in Pelican Township. Um, this plat is, it's west of city limits, straight north of what I typically call the center of Pelican Lake. Um, we have, there's a subdivision known as Lanus Edition that is just to the south of this that has several houses. Um, what Mr. Hornig is doing is he is plating four lots adjacent to one seventy-third street, uh, just west of the intersection with four fifty-first Avenue. Um, one seventy-third street is also known as Twentieth uh Avenue for the city of Watertown, Twentieth Avenue South. Um, again, these four lots will be able to have residential uh building rates to them because they are zoned lake park. These uh four lots are, is far west, if I recall correctly, I think this is as far west as Mr. Hornig could go and still um keep the whole property in the lake park zoning district. He did uh contact the Lake Pelican, or sorry, the Pelican Township Board and worked through with them and the township board asked that he only have one access onto this road, which is consistent with what we see to the south. They only have, they have two on a loop there. And so he has agreed to put a, to dedicate a twenty-foot easement on the south edge of this, so they'll have one entrance and then the four lots will have to share. They have a shared driveway is what it'll amount to. And um, so they'll have to have an agreement as far as who who maintains what in front of what portion on there. Uh, then the last point to this is that this is within the plat jurisdiction of the city of Watertown, primarily for um outside in this area. It's for management of roadways and that sort of thing, that things don't get out ahead of them. And I give Mr. Hornig credit, they they went to the city first to get that taken care of so that they knew what questions they need to answer there. We're on the back end of this, was recommended for approval at our last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that carries as well. All right, our fourth and final.
So the last plat is is just kitty corner from the one you just did, the Hornig Edition. It is the plat of Hopper Second Edition in government lot three and the north half of the northwest quarter of Section nine in Pelican Township. Again, this is just to the southwest, just a little bit of where we were just talking, across the road, that one seventy-third. The plat itself, I'm gonna take just a little bit of time to describe this because all of this is tied together, okay? This one. This one, I didn't show you the lines on paper, Commissioner Gable, if you wanna switch to that next one, I just wanna show this here, so here's the deal, um, there are, there is a aqua-colored parcel on the east edge here that is owned by the Hoppers within Lenous Edition, that's a small lot that's platted accordingly to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, they own that, they could build on that. They had initially purchased an area that is in a dotted, uh, has a dotted line, you can kind of see that back to the west there. They purchased that property, uh, I'm sorry, I'm estimating here, two years ago and platted that as a square, it's approximately six acres is what it is. And in order to do so, they had to dedicate an easement off of that property to the east in the aqua color from Lenous Circle, there's a cul-de-sac there. Because they didn't have any means of access up to Twentieth Avenue Southwest, which is one-seventy-third. So now what they've done is they've worked with the McFarlands and now they have, uh, have an agreement to purchase the area that is now outlined in green. And that is what is considered Hopper Second Edition. So of course that'll be platted if the property, um, or that'll be transferred if this plat were to go through. Currently, as it's shown, um, it is split zoning, which I, I don't, uh, I don't love that situation, however, from a standpoint of what they're asking to do. Currently, it doesn't trigger any requirement to change how they're handling it. The portion that's zoned lake park includes eleven-point-eight acres, the portion that's zoned ag is fourteen-point-two. They would not be able to build anything on the north side of this line, only on the south side. So to give you a, give you a point, so only in the orange could they build anything as things sit today. The last component to this is that this property as of now would need a, uh, it, it needs to be signed off for access. It obviously fronts on Twentieth Avenue Southwest. Pelican Township, and rightfully so, has been cognizant of my, uh, managing their access to property along Twentieth Avenue Southwest. This is, uh, they're in contact, uh, the Hoppers and Pelican Township are, uh, in contact with each other at this point, trying to manage whether or not they're interested in that. But I do wanna point out that regardless of if, uh, if access is provided on Twentieth, there is still that easement that comes back to the cul-de-sac, so in, in the worst-case scenario, uh, if, if they were not allowed access directly to Twentieth, they would have access off of Lenous Circle, off of the subdivision off to the west via an easement, so. Bottom line is, there was a lot of arm wave in there and that's why I wanted to make sure I was on this meeting to explain this. One thing may change as far as access, but as far as it goes, it does have access in at least one, if not two, locations. So, planning commission recommended approval, uh, subject to, um, you know, the requirements of Pelican Township with regard to how they wanna manage access on there. And that's why I'd recommend.
Second.
We got a motion by Johnson, second by Gable, any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Say Luke, before you leave, would you call me later on today, please?
Certainly.
Waterman.
I will certainly do that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you Luke.
Thank you, and I think I'll see you next week, thanks.
Very good, I'm glad you were on to explain all that. All right, uh, we will move on to item number thirteen, discussion action regarding December meeting dates. And I had a discussion with Cindy to see, you know, what would work the best for her and her office as far as, um, you know, if we're gonna take that fifth Tuesday off, I, I think with all that's going on, it's better that we just meet all of the Tuesdays this month. That's kind of my recommendation and what works best for the auditor's office, so. Anyone have any heartburn over that?
I guess it'd be quick meetings anyways, so.
I probably should have a motion that we want to meet on December twenty-ninth because we do have the policy that's been approved to not meet.
I'll move that we meet on the twenty-ninth.
I'll say it.
Got a motion by Johnson, second by Gable.
And there's no need to vote on the twenty-second because that's a normal meeting day.
I may need to zoom in that day, but I'll be in attendance.
All right.
Very good, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Um, number fourteen, discussion possible action to adopt a resolution to ban open burning. Jamie had to step out and go to a meeting. He said the state hasn't provided a climatology report this week, the National Weather Service from Aberdeen's report shows improvement since last week. Currently, for the next forty-eight hours, fire danger has improved to low categories with warmer temperatures forecasted. Those categories will fluctuate between low and moderate models. At this time for the week, I don't see any action to declare a ban, we can continue weekly monitoring. So with that recommendation, I guess we will just leave it on the agenda and address it again next week. Um, item number fifteen, action to approve claims for payment. The had total claims are one million thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cents of that amount. Uh, just over six hundred and eighteen thousand are county claims and just over four hundred thousand are, or just over four hundred and eighteen thousand are state pass-through monies. I did not notice anything out of the ordinary, you might see something in the claims. We are making a payment to SDML, which stands for South Dakota Municipal League, it's our annual workers' compensation payment. And the good news there is that is it is down fifteen thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars from what we paid last year, so it's down from one hundred and eight to ninety-three thousand and that's basically because we, uh, we receive a rating each year on claims and the claims go back a number of years and we have finally had a number of large claims that have fallen off the, uh, the chart for determining our rating renewal.
On that one Cindy, so that one's, that one's in a number of departments?
Every department who, every, every department who has people on payroll and the amount that you are charged for office is based on your salaries.
And that was, that was just gave by the totals of all those, correct?
Right, um, yeah, the total we are paying this year is ninety-three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. You can, you can see that law enforcement amount is quite a bit more. Even the Director of Equalization is quite a bit more because of the job the appraisers have going out in the field, that's. They have their own category of ratings, so. Otherwise, most of them are clerical.
With that being said, we need to congratulate our employees for saving us a buy-all money.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, it's, um, with the help of safety benefits.
Yep.
Making recommendations on protective equipment and protective procedures, you know, sit, sit correctly in your desk so you don't suffer from strain and carpal tunnel and, yeah.
Um, I also just had to point out that the first and only people we're gonna get in for this year to the consultant for the compensation study, that's from McGrath, that's so five thousand dollars, so helps a little bit with next year, so by doing that.
Um, it's very possible that we will be running through a one more claim at the end of December for the key fob program or project if they can get a bill to us, it'd be in our best interest to pay that in twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah. All right.
Any other questions on the claims?
So I need a motion to approve. Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen, any other comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number sixteen, action possible discussion on COVID-nineteen practices, procedures, policy. Natalie, Lee, I don't know, I can't think of anything, anyone else? Anyone else has that, all right. Item number seventeen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
We have one today and this is pod grant money that we received in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which matches an invoice we paid out of the emergency management budget to Joanne Paulson, the local pod coordinator. So we, we can supplement emergency management budget with that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Um, item number eighteen, action to approve personnel changes. You have those?
Several of those, they're all, all three of these are appraisers in the Director of Equalization office, they're all due anniversary step increases. Allison Forbush will go to step eleven, twenty-two ninety-five per hour. Melissa Sears will go to, it'll step eleven, twenty-two eighty-five per hour and the difference there is one employee is eligible for the ten cents incentive that the board has approved for, um, educational credits, yes. And the third one is Heidi Selkert, Selkert, and she'll go to step eleven, twenty-three twenty-one per hour.
Step twelve.
Step twelve.
It's okay, all right, so we have a motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen.
And I would just like to, to say that on the liaison to that department, I would just like to thank them for their service to the county.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries, travel request? Nothing, uh, obviously, public notices, quorum of commissioners in attendance. Anyone have anything?
I just, well, there's a JDAI meeting today, it's by Zoom, I think I'm the only commissioner attending.
It's at noon.
All right.
What, what was that?
Juvenile detention alternative initiative, JDAI, someone that the Boys and Girls Club kind of ponchos now.
All right, um, any old business? Any new business?
I did include some correspondence in your packets, um, that came from your association executive director regarding released conservation districts who suffered a final, financial loss as a COVID, as a result of COVID-nineteen. It's like your association has worked with the South Dakota Association of Conservation Districts to determine who is eligible for cost reimbursement. Joint Appropriations Committee did not feel the amount was large enough to warrant a separate program, therefore the committee indicates they intend to provide the applicable county, counties, conservation districts with CARES Act funds to forward to conservation district. Not sure why.
Does the conservation district need to fill out paperwork?
I, I assume so, I'm not sure why they chose the counties, we do not really have.
Yeah.
So there's some counties that do pay their conservation districts.
True, true, yes.
So that's probably why it's kind of a blanket thing, I did, I do attend the conservation district meetings and this topic did come up, so um, I just directed her to, you know, contact, um.
I, I wasn't sure where this came from.
Yeah, yeah, I think he just did a blanket one because.
Okay, because some counties do budget for conservation districts, Connington County does not.
Have not, was unfortunate not to have to because they've been able to be self-sustained.
Yeah, they're tax-able.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Any, okay, that's new business, uh, anything for the open? I don't think we had any public comments, we didn't hear anything. Do we have a need for executive session, Natalie? Okay, under. All right.
Was there a small?
Personnel.
Oh, might have been.
Be a personnel.
Okay.
All right, look for a motion to go in.
So move.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are in executive session, I don't think there will be any, anything afterwards. And if so, we'll let you know, Daisy.